December twenty twenty, City of Nashville Planning Board. Linda, could we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Donches? Mike Peterson?
Here.
Scott Leclerc?
Here and alone.
Adam Barley?
Here and alone.
Ed Weber?
Here alone.
Alderman David Tensin? Alderwoman Jan Schmidt? Dan Hudson?
Presenting alone.
Maggie Harper? Bob Ballinger?
Here and alone.
Larry Hirsch?
Here and alone.
We have a four.
Good. I'm gonna go ahead and read the introductory statement first. So again, I'm Scott Leclerc. I'm the Chair of the City Nashville Planning Board. And again, this is the third of December twenty twenty Planning Board meeting. As Chair of the Planning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by Governor Sununu as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number Twelve pursuant to Executive Order twenty twenty dash zero four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there's no physical location to observe and listen contain pereniously to this meeting, which was authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are one, providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are video conferencing utilizing Zoom. Public access to this meeting is provided via Zoom and link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda that's available on the city's website. Meeting can also be streamed to the city's website, that www.nashuaanh.gov/ three one eight, front slash CTV on Nashville's Community Link and the public may also view this meeting by Comcast Channel sixteen. Number two, we are providing public notice of necessary information for accessing the meeting. Number three, if anyone is having any problems accessing the meeting, please go ahead and call six zero three five eight nine three one one five and they will help you connect. Number four, in the event the public is unable to access this meeting via the methods I've described, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. I'm in control of this meeting and to the extent practical and advisable, the board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. First, the applicant will present their case followed by questions by the board. We will allow for rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor with questions or opposition before the board then deliberates and determines an outcome. Applicants and their representatives and individuals required to appear before the board are appearing remotely and are not required to be physically present. These applicants and their representatives and individuals required to appear before the board may have contacted planning to arrange an alternative means of real time participation if unable to use Zoom. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting will be done by a roll call vote and that planning board meetings will continue to be held electronically until it's been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The board, the planning department, the city, thank everybody for their understanding and patience during this time. Okay, so we have in front of us the minutes from the November nineteenth twenty twenty Planning Board meeting. Does anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at those minutes and want to make a motion as to whether they're acceptable as presented or whether they need amendments?
That's a.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I was not at the meeting, so they should be asked to reflect that I was absent and then, of course, I can't then make a motion or
Okay.
I'll be abstaining.
Got it. What else want to make a motion?
That the minutes be accepted from the previous meeting.
Alright, so we have that motion and I assume, Mr. Peterson, you mean with the removal of Mr. Hudson as the members present as indicated?
Correct.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Peterson. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Barley, any further discussion? Could we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
You're muted, Mike.
Yeah, you're muted, Mike.
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alderwoman Jan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Abstaining.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
And Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Alright, and that motion passes.
Okay. So Communications?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Quickly go over the items that were emailed out to you. You should have received a, an email regarding case number one, the School Street project with engineering comments that were dated November twenty fourth. And you should have also received an email regarding case number two, Domain Avenue, we see regarding updated engineering comments dated December second, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, report of Chairman, Committee and Liaison. Ed, anything to report?
There we go. Finally, I'm done. The only thing we had is a communication from the dates. We had no meetings, so it was just an email for the dates for next year. That's it.
Alright, thanks. Okay, moving on with our agenda. Old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Old business site plans, there are none. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plan, this is case number one, City of Nashville owner. This is an application and acceptance of a proposed two lot subdivision. The new lot is a non-buildable lot to be retained by the city. The property is located at L. School Street. So do we have anybody from the board that has a chance, had a chance to review this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Weber, move to take jurisdiction.
Alright, so a motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second on that?
I have a second.
Second, my Mr. Barley, any further discussion? Could we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alderwoman Jan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, great. Do we have somebody who, is there someone from the city that wants to speak? Mr. Cummings, I guess? Go ahead and unmute Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's always good to be here to see you. For the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development. And I actually just had a clarification and it, and was gonna ask a question that looks like has already been addressed. I wasn't sure if I was gonna need to share my screen this evening or what the protocol was, but as I was about to ask that, I can see that it is now alive on, on the screen for everyone. So I'm gonna just quickly set out the orientation and overview of why we're here this evening, and then I'm gonna hand it over to Steve of Haner and Swanson to speak more to the technical details and then at the end, of course, happy to answer any questions that may arise, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, fire away.
So, again, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development. You hopefully are all aware of a project we've been working on in the city over the last few years, which was what we refer to as the School Street Parking Lot. We put it out for RFP disposition as a surplus piece of property quite a few years ago. Over the last few years, we've entertained various different type of development proposals. Fast forward to where we are today, we have a preferred developer in hand. We have a draft development agreement that we are working on. We have on a parallel track created a TIF. We are well on our way to try to get approximately a hundred and fifty units of, of multifamily housing, which are downtown needs and the city of Nashville needs in general here on this, on this. I'm sorry, say again?
I think somebody just needs to mute.
Okay, alright, so I'm just gonna continue on. So, so, Mr. Chair, and through you to the committee, I'm here to ask for your approval this evening of subdivision plan. This came about through conversations with the, with the developer and trying to, you know, achieve a multiple goals, one of which we have a parking lot that we are now redeveloping for a different type of use. It, the way it was currently laid out, the abutting properties, you know, for, for lack of a better word, bleed right into the parking lot itself. This would create some sort of delineation of buffer. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is create a better urban fabric. And I think this proposal achieves, achieves just that. So I'm gonna leave my comments there. I'm gonna ask Steve to kind of go through the more particular, finite, technical details and then happy to answer any questions.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Steve Auger. I'm a project manager with Haner Swanson and our office is located at Three Congress Street here in Nashville. As Mr. Cummings mentioned, where we've come before you tonight seeking approval for a one into two subdivision of the, the city's parking lot tract located on School Street. It actually, as you can see on the plan I've shared, it fronts on School Street and on High Street. The total tract is point six eight seven acres in size. It falls in the downtown one mixed-use overlay zone. It is lot fifty-four. Very simply put, what we're doing, as you can see by the plan, we're proposing to cut off a small, non-buildable lot that is point oh four three acres in size and is basically the equivalent of kind of the drive-through aisle of two of the curb cuts that go from School Street and to High Street. And it also provides access to those two abutting parcels, Lafayette Realty and, and the Polish American Club. It really, it doesn't get much simpler than that. If you have any questions, I will be glad to answer them.
Okay, thanks. So the only question I have just maybe is on the width. There was some comment by the Fire Department in our package about the unobstructed width being not less than twenty feet, do you know?
We did get that, we did get that comment. The, the site plan for this is still kind of in the works. You know, we, we are, like I said, part of, part of doing this is, is to provide access to those other two lots and we certainly intend to, to work with the Fire Department, you know, as, as, as the site plan moves forward in, in dealing with the width they're desiring.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I could, I'm gonna just put a more finer point on, on this. You know, ultimately, what we're trying to do is create an urban realm that is pedestrian-friendly and, you know, this area between this, this new right-of-way area, you know, we haven't scoped out the entire vision of this with the, with the, with the preferred developer, but you know, we're trying to make sure that it is pedestrian-centric. The ultimate goal that I believe the Fire Marshal is trying to arrive at is obviously trying to gain, make sure that there is access and adequate fire suppression coverage for the various dwellings and structures in the land area. As you can see, this entire site is encompassed by right-of-way that will allow for emergency access. School Street on both sides of the properties and then High Street, High Street itself, there is full coverage for that fire access. Ultimately, this, this area that we're trying to create, this right-of-way, is going to be an alley, but I again want to caution everyone not to think of it as a, you know, alley that you think of traditionally, but more of a pedestrian-friendly type of realm where people will feel comfortable walking, walking through.
Okay. Do you know what, what are the dimensions of the sliver, if you will, there? Let me see, you can.
Right, right now, at the, the end that fronts onto School Street, it's fifteen point nine three feet. And on the end that fronts up at High Street, it's fourteen point one two feet.
Does that mean functionally speaking, the developer is gonna need to stay called six feet off that? With the, with the, with any proposed new building to the, to the west, we'll say?
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think in, ultimately, we need to have further conversation with the Fire Department to determine just that. You know, one of the challenges with this project is, as Mr. Cummings said, we are in the process of developing the final site plan and, you know, elevations for the building. And I think Fire was providing preliminary comment, but ultimately, I think we need to make that determination as we go along. And I'd point out that one of the other critical reasons that this is being done more from a technical perspective is that ultimately, the project needs to meet the, the maximum setback line, and that's a really important piece of this, and that's why this adjustment is so necessary. So the intent of the developer is to provide adequate space there. And certainly, anything that's proposed on the site plan side of things, we'll have to comply with, you know, applicable NFPA, but we just don't know what that will look like yet.
Great. But, but we're, the site plan, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not gonna necessarily get to see that, right?
That's correct. It, as proposed,
Yeah.
it, it is, because it meets certain standards of the D-one downtown zone, it will be exempt from planning board review.
Right.
That said, obviously, we'll have to comply, you know, with the necessary standards that the planning board would normally review in, but you're correct, Mr. Leclerc, that you will not see it as part of your review process.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, if I may,
Sure.
I, I have had conversations with the developer. I know he is looking to have, I think the maximum setback would be about ten feet. He would be somewhere in that realm because he's gonna have various infrastructure that he's gonna need to maintain, and I, I don't know exactly where that point is gonna be, but it, I think that there would be adequate space to be able to accommodate the, the, the regulation when the time comes.
Yeah, I assume the Fire Department does have to sign off on the site, site plan.
That, that's correct, Mr. Chair. They will ultimately have to sign off on, you know, the building permit and subsequent, you know, as a result, the site plan. And I would point out, not to comment too much on the Fire NFPA code, but obviously, this site is unique as it has access from two public ways. And that certainly is a benefit as far as fire protection. That'll be a part of the equation when we start to get to that point of review process.
Okay, yeah, that was really my only question is whether or not that particular comment was really something the board needed to be concerned with or whether it was essentially gonna be the Fire Department that was gonna lead that. Sounds like they may, so. Any other questions by the board? Or Mr. Auger, did you have something?
Mr. Chair.
Sorry, so the applicant.
If, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I just, I also wanted to mention the one waiver we're seeking with this.
Yeah.
Is section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine.
Yep.
In that, in that regard, showing specific existing conditions on the plan. We're seeking to not show existing topography on the site. Simply put, this isn't your typical subdivision, you know, that creates, you know, some type of, you know, developable lot where, you know, a site plan follows or whatnot. So in the fact that this is a one-sheet recordable plan, we really feel that showing topography on this plan or adding an extra plan isn't necessary. So we're, we're seeking a waiver of that section.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Ballinger, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This, this may be a question most appropriately directed towards, to, to Mr. Sullivan. But I, I guess if, if this board were to approve the subdivision, it, it sounds like this might be our only bite at the apple, so to speak, because it won't come under traditional site plan review. Are, are we still allowed to impose conditions? More specifically, plan must meet applicable standards or comments proposed by the Fire Marshal. And, and I understand this being a unique situation, but, you know, if, if public safety is, is still a concern, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand what, what real role we, we have in this other than just voting yes or no on the actual subdivision plan. And, and could we, could we potentially offer such a condition of approval of, of the subdivision plan?
It's, it's a great question, Mr. Ballinger, and, and the short answer is you are welcome to apply conditions that are relevant to the subdivision standards and, and the, the lot plan that's in front of you right now. I, I know this is not what you're suggesting, but obviously, you could not put any restrictions on the subdivision approval related to a site plan standard related to an architectural feature, and I know that's not what you're suggesting, but just for the record, that, that's where we need to draw the line. You will see that staff did recommend conditions that ultimately, the Fire Department will need to be satisfied with whatever the final plan is. The reason that we did that is we wanted some time to have that final conversation with the Fire Department, but they are comfortable with this subdivision piece as we understand it. Their concerns really lie in what the ultimate aisle width is as we move forward. So we, Bob, to your point, we've put that condition in there because we do recognize that those items need to be addressed. But we need to be careful about not doing something like establishing aisle width, establishing parking space size through this process, which is really just focused on lot creation.
No, that, that, that helps, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that.
Of course.
Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
So first, I had a question for, for Mr. Cummings. I just wanted to get clarification on a, a comment you made that, you know, this, this, the alleyways you described it is, is intended to be, you know, a sort of pedestrian-friendly. So I just wanted to understand, is, is the intent then that that would be, that that would, you know, motor vehicle traffic would be prohibited? This would be pedestrian only?
No, I would not suggest it'd be prohibited, but it would be, you know, not encouraged, is how I would describe it. Emergency management, public safety access, it would all need to be allowed to, to occur. Trash collection, trash removal, refuse, collection and whatnot would all need to be able to occur. You know, and, and yes, if a passenger vehicle was to go down there, that would all need to occur, but, you know, we would wanting to be create a built environment that would, you know, create a condition where a pedestrian realm was more, was more palpable.
And I guess then, sort of related to that, then, given that, that, you know, at least in theory, this could be effectively a through, you know, not, not a street necessarily, but a through passageway for, for regular traffic. You know, is the expectation that as part of the site plan, understanding that there's a lot in flux right now, that there would be features of this that would, you know, clearly delineate, you know, you know, pedestrian traffic areas, whether it's a sidewalk or something else?
I think, Mr. Barley, at this time, it's, it's difficult to say. I, I, and I hate to, I hate to provide that answer because I'm not sure if it's helpful to anybody on the board, but I think to Mr. Cummings' point, we're, we're just not sure. You know, the building is very much so cylinder design. We don't know if that area is going to be the utility access area, whether it's going to be the trash receptacle area. I think that we're fairly confident it's likely not gonna be the primary vehicle entrance area, but even that, we do not know. And again, I wanna, I just wanna caution everybody that all, all that you have in front of you is this subdivision, although we're contemplating the future development, I admit even for myself, it's very hard not to do that. We do have to just, we need to analyze whether or not this is an appropriate subdivision and it, it does meet the regulations. Obviously, you have a waiver in front of you and that does create a different issue. But I think the questions are being asked, while they're very good, do go beyond what the board's jurisdiction is as far as the subdivision.
Yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate that and I understand that, you know, we obviously, as you say, we, we can't get into subdivision, or I'm sorry, site plan you know, requirement specifically here, but I had, you know, I was curious about that, given that, you know, Mr. Cummings has specifically raised it. I guess.
If I may, I, I just, I mean, I would just wanna follow on to what Mr. Sullivan was saying. We're just not at that level of design. What, what I'm telling you is like the vision and the aspiration, but we're just, we're just not there yet. And part of the reason why is because we're not sure whether we can, we can do it or not, which is one of the reasons why we're, we're here this evening.
No, understood. I guess, Matt, can I ask a, a related question to, I think that's something that's, you know, sort of, we've talked about now in a couple of different contexts in terms of the distinction between the, the site subdivision and, and site plan. So given that we're not anticipating that a site plan would come back to the planning board, I'm just wondering, is, is there any other process by which abutters would have, you know, the opportunity to comment on or provide feedback with respect to ultimately, you know, what the, what the, the development, you know, will consist of, will look like? Or is it not anticipated that there would really be any sort of public process, understanding obviously that it wouldn't be through the planning board if we're not looking at a site plan?
Sure, and Mr. Barley, great question. I, I think it's, it's a, it's one that's important to ask and the, the short technical answer is, as far as we see the project, based on the plans that we've seen as of today, I do not foresee an opportunity for the public to have a legal comment on the project as proposed. You know, that said, we always encourage the public to provide feedback and certainly, the public has been aware of some of the proposed conceptual plans and renderings that have been presented as part of the Board of Aldermen process, and they're certainly will, you know, welcome to respond to those. But quite frankly, after this process, this becomes a technical exercise. If it becomes a review of building code, fire code and the site plan review regulations and because that's the case, I do not foresee an opportunity for the public to weigh in directly, other than providing the typical public feedback that it always has the ability to, to give.
Okay.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, no, I appreciate that clarification. Thank you for.
Oh, so I just have a technical question to this lot that's being created seventy-nine fifty-five, right? This is a new lot, new lot? Or call it, or one thirty on the plan? That lot's owned by, will, that will still be owned by the city? After a potential sale of the adjacent lot? Where's the city? I guess I'm wondering, is that accurate?
Yes, that is correct.
So if there's any improvements on that lot, would that mean there'd be a site plan created for that lot?
No, I mean, it, it depends. I think it depends what those improvements are. You know, for example, if there was a layout of a public way there in some, in some form, right?
Right.
That would be something that would not be subject to traditional site plan review.
Right.
If a structure were to be built there, obviously, that would be different, but the case is that this is presented as an unbuildable lot in the application. So therefore, I don't see a specific type of development, at least I'm not contemplating one, that would require the board's review.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was just getting at, so there, there can't be any structure into that lot, that new lot. All it could be is a flat way. Yeah.
Certainly, I mean, the, the city could, you know, and I think just to lay everything out there, the city could have some improvements related to the development there if it chose to, whether they be pedestrian improvements or however that.
Lighting, whatever, right?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But, but those may or may not, actually, they likely wouldn't require any planning board review, so it's, but certainly to, to the point of the plan, it's non-buildable in the context that a structure could not be built upon it.
Yeah, okay. That clarifies it for me. Yeah.
And Mr. Cummings, please clarify me, clarify if I'm incorrect on that, but I believe that that's the case.
So you are a hundred percent correct.
Other questions by the board?
Weber?
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Okay, so this fifty-four is gonna be a, is just a subdivision plan and then he's gonna have a building put onto this. And to me, I don't know why, but for this opens the door to me that says any future person can have a subdivision plan and not show any building, and yet that's what we've always had. We've had a site plan and we can see and the people in the neighborhood can see what it's, the setbacks and everything is gonna be and what it's gonna look like and how.
And we can see and the people in the neighborhood can see what it's the setbacks and everything is gonna be and what it's gonna look like and how that would affect. Their businesses. And so right now, as I see it, there is no um. Uh, answerability to the neighborhood. It's just being built by this, gonna be in the future. It's gonna be a contractor. So a person coming in and building. The other question I have is in that area. Um, there is so many dumpsters in that area, and they're very unsightly. They're on the sidewalks. They're in the right of way. Uh, what is the city gonna be doing about this while this, uh, if anything they can do? Um, but to me, this opens the door for other uh subdivision. Or uh things that are gonna come about. So just explain why this is different. The public is not allowed to see what the building, and then once the building is designed, there's no accountability to the public.
Chairman, can I please say our Marshall?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Marter.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Weber, you bring up some good questions. This is unique, and it's different than other projects you've worked on. Because this is in the D one district, and it was designed very specifically with sets of architect-actual standards. With standards for garbage, with standards for utilities, with very clear design guidelines that have to be met to the letter. If everything is met and no waivers are required, that is the instance where it is, as as um. Director Sullivan said, it is a check the box technical review of a project zone. This was designed very specifically in the downtown to allow these kind of projects. To move forward without having to come to full planning board review. We haven't had very many of these because we haven't had a lot of ground up development in our downtown. In hundreds of, in there in decades and decades, and so the zoning specifically allows for this if it meets all the standards that were laid out. By the master plan and by this existing land use code. And so that's why this is unique and different, because they have to meet all the standards we as a community already agreed to.
Okay, and and anything can be done, can anything? I mean, now you have standards, but are those standards being still met by all the dumpsters that are on the sidewalk? Have those been met before previous?
So there is difference downtown in that you're not allowed, you, there are not site plans for many of the projects downtown. This is an urban environment, and it is not subject to the same standards as the rest of the city. There are dumpsters on the sidewalks in parts of downtown. Is that ideal? No. Are there other places for them to be? Not necessarily. And so those sites that don't have site plans that have been in existence since well before our zoning. Have to have a way to manage garbage. And it is con, this this new project would have to meet current standards. But existing projects, existing buildings that have been there in operation forever are not necessarily subject. To the same standards.
Okay. If I could just add one additional comment, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, ultimately, uh, to speak to Mr. Weber's question, which I think is is yet another good one, that is, when the board approves a subdivision. You certainly do approve a a a building footprint or contemplate a building footprint when you look at a typical residential subdivision. Ultimately, when a building is built, though, they are subject to the overarching zoning standards that exist in the zoning ordinance, and they have the freedom to work within those. They are not bound specifically by the subdivision plan that was approved when it comes to the buildings or the homes themselves. So while this is different, it's very similar or the same in the sense that ultimately this developer has the ability to build within within whatever the underlying zoning allows. And that's precisely what is being proposed by uh in this particular case on the remaining lot fifty-four. So. Well, it is certainly uh, you know, different. Your typical subdivision review process is very similar in that ultimately the buildings themselves are reviewed by the building department and the planning department. And there is flexibility there for developer.
Mr. Weber. You're on mute there.
Thank you. Um. Right now, as I see it, and I was there, there is a lot of cars that park there. Um. Those are gonna have to be pushed out onto the street. Is that correct? Are there gonna be sufficient? Parking for all the people that uh the livelihood of these uh other. Businesses that are there that are utilizing this parking. Is there sufficient parking on the street? Uh, or is this gonna be really a problem by the parked cars that are necessary to to? Have these businesses function? So if I may, Mr. Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So uh, a couple of points. Um, and and one, I I I don't want to muddy the waters too much by confusing the two issues. I mean, some of the questions being. You know, asked are site plan specific type questions, and then we have the subdivision question, which is before the body this evening. But putting putting a a more finer point to it relative to the refuse collection, I completely agree with you. Um, you know, it is ungodly. I can tell you that this project in hand is going to address it for this particular site. And I hope it sets a precedent and a standard that other projects, when they come down the line for redevelopment, will follow. Um, and we have to start somewhere. As Director Marchant noted, a lot of what you see is buildings that are in existence prior to site plans actually being uh and zoning being in existence. So. We're catching up, and we're starting now. And so putting that issue aside, talking about the parking. I just want to remind folks that this site first floor will have public parking on it on the first floor. And then we do have the parking garages, and we do have the street parking uh on 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 street parking allowed. So there will be parking. Available to the uh businesses in 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 the area. Thank you.
Other questions by the board? Um, I'm not sure who's sharing. Maybe you can stop sharing. That'd be good, so I can see the, see the board. Because Steve, maybe, are you sharing?
I I I I am sharing. I'm just looking to unshare here.
There we go. Thanks. Okay, any other further questions um? By the board uh for the applicant at this point? Mr. Hudson?
I just had a question. This is the first one of these I've come across, but is there no minimum lot size requirement for this district?
So that's my understanding, yes, Dan, and I I I would defer to Linda only because she's had more experience with the regs in this downtown area. So sorry, Linda, hate to throw it to you, but I have to in this case.
Looking it up right now.
Okay, thank you.
This is in a D one. There is no minimum lot area in the D one.
Thank you, Linda.
Other question by the board for the. Okay, hearing no questions by the board at this point, I'll open the um discussion. Is there anybody? Um, I'll say in the audience, the virtual audience, willing to uh or wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, or have a question. Go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record, and go ahead. Seeing or hearing anybody?
I don't see anybody with their hand raised either.
Okay. And said, uh, any further questions by the board while we're in the hearing? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing and move into the meeting. Okay. So we have in front of us, um, so the subdivision, obviously, it's a different scenario than we used to see and um with the um. Sort of only going through a subdivision for what a what amounts to be a a larger development. Um, but I think we have seen this sort of lot in the sort of proposed development for some time now. Um, so I'm pretty comfortable with it on my end, but anybody else on the board have any comments or? Mr. Varley?
Yeah, I mean, I I I agree. I would say just, you know, looking at this from the perspective of the subdivision plans in front of us, it's 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 pretty straightforward. Um, and, you know, I don't have any concerns with it, and I I mean, understanding that. You know, as you said, you know, ordinarily, we would expect, you know, the the larger development to come for us in the site plan, but um, you understanding that's 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 not the case here. Um, I think it's obviously it's appropriate, necessary to focus on subdivision planets in front of us, and and with that in mind, I I certainly. Would be in favor of approving this, you know, given the um, you know, that it's pretty straightforward and simple.
Other comments, discussion items by the board?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
I I I'll I'll just just add in for for what it's worth, uh, ju-just from 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 past lives. You do come across the situation every once in a while, whether it's a certain zoning area or whether it's an institutional u- use. Um, uh. It doesn't typically follow the 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 usual site plan review process, and I think there were some very good points brought up during the the Q and A earlier. During the public session. Um, but I I I I guess I'll I'll fall back to Mr. Sullivan's testimony that that basically given for for what this is. Um, I would, I would tend to to agree with 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 Mr. Varley that. Uh, given, given what we have to work with and given the proposal that is before us, um, I I I think this. This is reasonable, and and again, I know it's a little bit unusual because we we typically would get to see this again. Um, if this were a more conventional area or a different zoning area. Um, but I I did just want to follow along and and just. You know, it's 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 not completely out of the out of the ordinary, although it's a little unusual. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Anybody else comment? Certainly bolsters why uh our current master planning effort is definitely warranted for the city as a whole. You know, these types of lots obviously have to conform to master plan, so keeping our master plan up to date, you know, is a is a big deal. So I'll add that two cents to the discussion here. Um, okay, anybody want to make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I I just would like to remind the board that you give me see. You see, he added as a stipulation of approval.
And which ones were they?
Mr. Chair, there are three engineering comments received from Joe Mandola on November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty. And I think we would recommend that they be uh prior to signing the plan. And addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department. Some of those comments have been addressed, or we have uh sufficient answers to them, but. Uh, addressed to the satisfaction of the Division of Public Works, I think would be an appropriate. Condition as a condition number seven for that eleven twenty-four email from Joe Mandola.
But addressed to the satisfaction of.
The Division of Public Works, and and Mr. Hudson, please chime in if I'm if I'm off on that, but I I believe that uh that would be a an acceptable condition on this.
Yeah, that that works.
It'd be prior to signing the plan?
Yes, please.
Who's signing this plan, though? I'm not really signing. Am I? I guess I'm signing the subdivision plan.
You are.
So you mean signing the subdivision one?
Correct.
Okay, got it. All right, anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
There, um. I will make a motion to approve new business number one subdivision plan. Um, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision N R O section one ninety dash one thirty-eight G. And that uh approval would have a total of seven stipulations. The first uh being a wave request from section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine with respect to an existing conditions plan. And that will read is granted, will not be contrary to spirit and intent of the regulation. Uh, stipulations two through six to read as written in the staff report. And then um I will add a new stipulation seven. Uh, and that will read that prior to the chair signing the plan, uh, all engineering comments um submitted an email from. Um, Mr. Mandola dated November twenty-fourth. Will be addressed to the satisfaction of the Public Works Department.
Okay, so we have that motion to uh approve the subdivision plan with the seven stipulations as indicated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second on it? Second by Mr. Weber. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alderwoman Jan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to um next agenda item, new business site plan. This is case number two. This is seventy-five Deerwood Drive LLC owner. This is an application and acceptance of a proposed ten-unit multifamily. Residential development. This property is located eighteen and twenty Domain Avenue. Um, I guess this was postponed from an earlier meeting, so we haven't taken jurisdiction on this yet, so. Um, has anybody had a chance to review this application? Anybody from the board who want to make a motion as to whether it's ready to take jurisdiction? So. Mr. Hudson? All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Hudson to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Could we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alderwoman Jan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, so do we have someone from the applicant that wants to go ahead and present this uh site plan?
Uh, yes. Uh, my name is Peter Dolph. I'm the President of SQL Development and Management, Inc. We are located at Two Knightsbridge Drive. And uh here in Nashville, Hampshire. Uh, my business partner, Steve Valier, is is on via phone this evening. And then I'm being assisted by my daughter, Brittany Dolph, who's the owner of Wicked Awesome Three D and is gonna be the technological assistance here. So we'll put up our our site plan.
Um. Starting that now?
What we are proposing. I'm assuming everybody can see that, okay?
Yep, that's fine. Yeah.
Excellent. So what we're proposing at eighteen twenty Domain Street is a ten units of townhouse style. Construction. There'll be three-story units. The form of ownership will be condominium, so these will be for sale units. These are all three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, one-car garage. There is two surface spots of parking in front of the unit, and then, of course, the one-car garage inside. Uh, the construction is wood frame slab ungrade. Um, we chose slab ungrade due to the high water table in this neighborhood, um, so we didn't want to put basements in. The footprint of each unit is twenty by thirty-eight feet. Um, the site will be well landscaped. As I know, the um, this board is always very diligent about going out and looking at these sites ahead of time. Um, you folks would have gone down Deerwood Drive. Just. Um, so you are all aware, uh, our company has built the three projects on Deerwood Drive. The first being seventy, we drive, which is seven units of housing. And it's one unit for every three thousand four hundred and thirty-two feet. The second project is seventy-three Deerwood Drive, which is actually seventy-three, seventy-five, and seventy-seven Deerwood. Um, fourteen units, three thousand six hundred and seventy-nine square feet per unit. And then seventy-one Deerwood Drive, which is the final project we just finished, it's number thirteen, fifteen, and seventeen Deerwood, sixteen units. And that's uh three thousand six hundred and thirty-three square foot per unit. Uh, some of you will probably remember seventy-one Deerwood Drive was a kinder care facility, so it was a school daycare, and um we demised that to create the housing. Eighteen twenty Domain Street will be ten units, um, three thousand forty-nine square feet per unit. Um, it will be the merger of lots H dash one thirty-seven with lot H dash one forty-five to create one new lot. H H H is in Harry dash one thirty-seven dash one. It's uh thirty thousand four hundred and ninety-two square feet. So just reviewing the um, the requirements, um, this is a. PI Park Industrial uh MU Mixed Use Overlay Zone. Um, the MU, as you're probably all aware, is a fairly new designation for this zone. Minimum lot size thirty thousand square feet. We have thirty thousand. Minimum lot size thirty thousand square feet. We have thirty thousand four ninety two. Minimum frontage fifty. We have two hundred. Minimum lot width one twenty. We have two hundred. Minimum lot depth one fifty. And we have just over one fifty. It's one fifty two and some change. The minimum open space requirement is twenty percent. What we are proposing is forty nine percent. And the math is provided to the right of that. The maximum height is seventy five feet. We are proposing thirty five feet. Maximum stories is five. Um, we need to correct this in the plans. We're actually doing three stories. And then the max, there's no density requirements for this zone. So I did want to note that um. Parking, uh, the minimum requirement is one point five spots per unit. We are providing three spots per unit. But I do want to remind the board that the one, one spot of interior parking in the garage, these tend to become storage. Location for many owners, so we feel it's important to have the two surface spots out front, so even if the people do use their garages for storage, there's still two spots per unit. Um, so I know we see a little bit, um, typically what you like to see for parking. Um, this is not in a flood zone. All drainage will be handled onsite. As required by the city regulations, uh, via infiltration basins, which are shown on the plans. Um, there is adequate sewer service on Domain Street. As well, uh, water. Um, as some of you may know, this was one of the last streets in Nashville that did not have city. City water for many years. Last summer, Penetra completed a a large project on Hammer Street and then down to Main Street. Tying into Deerwood Drives water supply, so they've um, dramatically increased the water. Um, they've provided water on the street and then dramatically increased the water flow in that whole area. I believe it was a pressurization project of some sort, and at the same time, they brought water down to Main Street, so we have a adequate water supply. Gas, the gas comes from the Deerwood Domain Street intersection. And currently comes down to the corner, which is located uh, just south of twenty to Main Street. Liberty Utilities will bring the gas line up past the front of our project. My understanding is they're gonna oversize the line because they um, clearly hope to provide gas to other. Residents on that street, um, as none, none currently exists. And then I believe they're sizing it appropriately for some future development as there's um, some vacant lots in that street that likely will be developed down the road. So we will have adequate uh, gas on the street. Electricity um, will come off the existing poles. Our site will be all underground electricity, so it'll be buried uh, on our site. Trash pickup will be provided via a private contractor, uh, fifty gallon dumpster totes, which residents can store in their garages. There'll be no dumpster on site. The next thing I'd like to adjust is the engineering requests. Um, after we submitted our plans to engineering. Uh, Joe Mandola responded on November second. He had thirty eight questions slash requests. Slash additional details he wanted added. Um, we did all of that, and then those are the plans that you folks are looking at. Um, subsequent to your receipt of those plans, there were seven additional requests by Joe. Uh, that came in on December second. Um, five of those are are simply additional details he wants to see added to the plan, so we have no um. Issue providing the additional details and we will do that. So there'll be, you know, there'll be a final set of plans submitted to the professional staff that will include those items. There were two questions he asked, and I I just, I'll address those. Um, he was concerned, is there enough separation between the bottom of the storm tech devices, which are the infiltration basins? And the seasonal high water table, looking at existing elevations, bottom of chamber and seasonal high water table elevations, the separation would be about two point seven five feet. From the storm tech units behind the buildings and one point seven feet for the ones near the driveway. Are these sufficient? That was Joe's question. Our engineer answered. We want to have two feet of separation to the inverts of catch basin one and catch basin two. So these will be raised zero point three feet, as will corresponding storm tech chambers. So then he gives us some new elevation so that the base of our storm, storm bomb, storm. Infiltration basins will be slightly more than two feet above the high watermark. His other question was concerning plants. He wanted to ensure that we were using um. Plantings that didn't have excessive uh, root growth that might grow into the infiltration basins in search of water. So he he modified the um, landscaping plans to move the trees a little further away from the infiltration basins. And we in turn will make sure we use um, trees that don't have excessive root growth that might uh, create problems with those infiltration basins down the road. Um, this site, as as our first three sites on Deerwood, will have um. Irrigation for the grass areas, um, so you know, the lawns will be very green and they will be irrigated by city water. And then there are two waiver requests that go along with our um, application. Uh, the first one is one nine zero dash two seven nine. Show existing conditions on adjacent parcels. Survey covered immediately adjacent parcels in the area around site for twenty scale locals. The second one was one nine zero dash two seven nine for a traffic impact report. And the um, size of our project is too small. It doesn't meet the requirements for traffic impact report. In closing. Like to make just a couple of key points. Um, this is, this is a great neighborhood, a great site. It provides easy access to major thoroughfares. Route one oh one east and west is is a major thoroughfare through Nashor. You can exit this property on Domain Street, take a right and head east on um, on route one oh one, or you can. Go around and go off Deerwood Drive to a traffic controlled light, and you can go either east or west on one oh one, so. Uh, most of our residents will be able to exit and enter via a traffic control line. You also have very easy access to uh, Route three and the highway from here. Um, you also have great access to all the services in Nashor. Um, there are a lot of restaurants on one oh one when we're all able to enjoy those again. There's plenty of retail stores, there's medical services and there's grocery stores, so you have excellent access to um, all the services on one oh one. Another nice part about these units is that the price point is at a point where the um. Median wage earner in Nashor can afford to buy these units, so another term you might use for these is um, first time homeowner type units, so. We tend to get a lot of young couples buying their first home, and we've had a number of um. Folks downsizing, either single people or or older uh, folks who have sold a larger home downsizing to a uh, much easier to maintain condominium. Obviously, we've built and sold thirty four units in the neighborhood. These will be very similar, so we we have a pretty good handle on them, on our buyer at this point. Clearly, it um, we are taking two antiquated homes. We are demising those and we are, we are restoring them with. Ten modern uh, residences, so we're gonna greatly improve the neighborhood. We're gonna greatly improve the uh, number of homes in the area. And finally, it it all goes to help the natural tax base because now you have ten people paying taxes versus the um, the two antiquated homes. So that's my uh, brief presentation. I'd like to thank the board for taking the time to listen to our presentation tonight. And thank the professional staff, as always, they're great to work with as we put these things together. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, I think, I think you mentioned it, but the, these are um, sprinkled, fully sprinkled buildings.
I mentioned that these are, um, the grounds are gonna be fully irrigated, but um. Yeah, the units themselves will will have fire sprinklers in them. They'll be fully fire sprinkled.
Okay, great. Other questions by the board of the applicant?
Weber.
Go ahead, Mister Weber.
Um, on the northeast side. The decks that are there, um, would it be possible? They're gonna have outside lighting, correct?
Those are actually, um, they're patios, so you'll step out and you'll step down one, maybe two steps onto a concrete patio. And yes, code requires that we put a a light on the back that'll be controlled by a switch inside the slider door.
Okay, I'm looking at the elevation. It looked like it was uh, like one floor. It wasn't down on the ground level. Am I correct on that?
We, um. They'll, they'll either be one or two steps down to the ground. There'll be a concrete patio versus a uh, a wooden deck of any sort.
Okay, it just, I I'm looking at the plans and it it, to me, it looked like it was. The patio. Let me get back to it, sorry.
It's okay. What page are you looking at?
Yeah, uh, side elevation. Showing a deck. Maybe it's not correct. Uh, front elevation, side elevation, rear, yeah. Rear elevation shows that it is up on a, a deck. Maybe that's incorrect drawing.
Yeah. Drawing heat.
Oh, you're looking at the building elevations versus the site plans?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Yeah, no, the the plan is to put a a concrete patio. Um, our architect might have plugged that in just for um.
The reason that I was bringing this up is that their homeowner on the northeast side, if there was lights there. Could have this light shining in their bedroom all night long because somebody forgot to turn the light out. But if it's on the ground floor, then there's gonna be a fence there. Is that not correct?
That is correct. There's a proposed stockade fence.
Right, so that fence would block any light. Flushing on, you know, splashing on to the adjacent uh, thing, adjacent homeowner.
Yes, yeah, because the light would be um, on beside the door, so it wouldn't be that far off the ground. So you're correct, the stockade fence should block most of it.
Okay, that's my only, was my only concern, and uh, I've seen all your other buildings and I'm glad that you're building this one.
No, thank you.
That's all I had.
Thanks, okay. Other questions of the applicant by the board?
Mister Chair?
Go ahead, Mister Ballinger.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I I guess ju- just in light of Mister Weber's question, um. Does there need to be a resubmission of of the elevations or is is that? I'm not trying to get too hung up on that detail, but if 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 the plans are showing a raised deck versus what would. In, it sounds like be a, be a, be a step down patio at this point. I just don't know if modifications to the plan are are. Required and if that would be a condition of approval or. If, I I guess I'm looking for more of a procedural, perhaps um. Uh, the response from, from staff, I I guess I, I I just don't want to approve what's been submitted and. Have this not actually be what's, what's built.
Weber, can I interject?
Uh, why don't we have planning answer that first, yeah?
Well, I was just gonna say number three would answer that, stipulation three.
Yeah, but Linda, you can, you go ahead and go ahead, yeah?
Whoever um, said what I was pretty much gonna say.
Sorry.
Um, stipulation number three has a minor drafting corrections, and it might have been that. The architects sent in these elevations are typical, you know, renderings, and if they're gonna have a patio, which is what um. Mister Dolph said for the record, um, when they submit the final site plans, um, it'd just be a minor drafting correction.
Th- thank you, Linda. I appreciate that. I wasn't trying to go back to square one. I I just, uh, I appreciate the the clarification on the, on the matter. Thank you very much, thank you.
Other questions of the applicant by the board? Okay, um, maybe we could go ahead and stop sharing the plan for a minute, just so I can see the uh. Make sure nobody's waving in there. Audio's not working. Okay, yeah, I don't see anybody. All right, so uh, at this point, I guess I'd open it to the um, folks that are potentially listening in. Does anyone have a question, comment um, for the applicant? Uh, go ahead and unmute, just take your name and address for the record. Not seeing, Linda, you don't see any hands or anything, do you?
I know, Mister Chair, I don't see anybody with their hand raised.
Okay, all right, so I give the board uh, one more opportunity to ask questions of the applicant during the hearing or staff. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the hearing and uh, open the meeting. So we have a ten unit development proposed here. Um, I guess in my opinion, pretty well laid out. Looks like a good addition to the, sort of the neighborhood. Um, I don't have any concerns with it. Um, has a good track record, obviously. Of what's been done in the past. Anybody else have any comments or questions they want to talk about during the meeting? Anybody from the board? Go ahead, Mister Weber. Yeah, unmute and.
Oh, well, sorry about that. Number six is, uh, is that October second, twenty twenty?
I think it's December second, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was my element.
Anybody else?
Uh, yes, I have something.
Go ahead, Mister Peterson.
In the staff report dated November fifth, new business number four. Uh, there's a bunch of drawings, and one of them is the gratings, soils and drainage. And way over on the left side of that, there's the stormwater management notes. And one of the notes says the um. Catch basin needs to be cleaned at least four times per year, and the the sump needs to be cleaned at least twice a year. Maybe more after a heavy storm, so should we make that a stipulation or would that automatically be put in place? Once these drawings are accepted. Because that's a, you know, high water table area, and this sounds important, you know, if if these things don't get cleaned out, it could be flooding. So, um.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a condo thing, so. Yeah, Mister Varley, does doesn't typically that end up in like the condo docks or something?
Yeah, I mean, I would expect that would be, I think it would be in in the condo docks, that would be an obligation on. You know, the condo association to ensure that 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 maintenance is done. But I I would, I guess I would ask staff to comment. I mean, if the condo association is, is not, you know, living up to its responsibilities, I don't know if the. If the city has, you know, any, any enforcement ability um, against the association.
Uh, Mister Chair, um, stipulation number eight has um, stormwater documents that will be recorded as part of this. And it's to ensure that they do clean out um, their stormwater systems, and then we also have an easement so that if they weren't to do that. If they didn't do this, the city could go in and actually clean it, so it is actually gonna be something that's recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
Uh, to your question, Mister Peterson?
Yes, it does.
Great, anybody else?
Mister Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Mister Ballinger.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Um, I, with respect to to one of the waiver requests, uh, traffic study, I don't really have an issue with that. I mean, you're you're probably talking single digit trips. I I guess just uh, for for future consideration, per- perhaps um. Uh, for for staff and Mister Hudson, um. I I have a lot of familiarity with the the intersection of uh, Amherst, Deerwood and Thornton, uh, and the signal there and. Uh, the the there is a lot of, I think, increased traffic recently, just uh, Amazon has a facility nearby. If you try to pull into that seven eleven. Eight out of the ten cars in that lot at any time are are Amazon trucks, so I I guess I would just put forward maybe uh. Again, it's food for thought. Um, there may be opportunities in the future if other parcels are developed. Um, I don't know if there's some intersection fund. Or corridor fund in that area. Uh, you know, and again, I I think specifically for this application where my my. Quick back of the envelope calculations, you're you're literally talking less than, you know, seven, six peak hour trips. Um, putting it out there, I I thought at at some point we may have seen. Uh, possible site plan for for the seven eleven site, uh, coming down the pike or. Or as the, this applicant alluded to this evening, there there may be some other opportunities for future development, either on Deerwood or in that general area, so. Um, just, just uh, just, just general food for thought, but thank you, Mister Chair.
Um, Mister Hudson?
It's uh, it's funny that Mister Ballinger would bring this up. I was going back through the record and uh. Uh, Traffic Engineer and Husband on. Um, the second of November did, did um, note that. You know, we would typically seek contribution to the Amherst Street Quarter Fund, two hundred dollars a trip, and his estimation was ten trips. For twelve hundred dollars, so, um, you know, I think that that request might have got lost in the shuffle somewhere, so. I'd add that as a stipulation, and that would uh, help address Mister Ballinger's concerns. So I'd add that as a stipulation and that would help address Mr. Ballinger's concerns. Mr. Mendola's memo does reference addressing comments from engineer husband. So it is, it is kind of in there, you know, in the chain of, chain of things. But it might, might have gotten displaced in a couple of months that we've postponed this.
Okay, yeah, does anybody in the board feel like they, I guess when they're making a motion, if they feel like that's not explicit enough or the, the current stipulations don't cover it? And certainly could do as Mr. Hudson indicated. Thanks. Any other questions or discussion items during the meeting here? Okay, anybody want to make a motion? From the board? Mr. Weber?
Yes, but a question before. Dave, David, and there is one for Joe Mandola. What would the, what was the contribution?
It was $1,200 to the Amherst Street Traffic Corridor account. And the date of the, of Mr. Husband's was November 2nd.
Was that 2020?
Yes, 2020.
Thank you. Hopefully I get that right because I'm, I'm shooting it from the hip. New business number 275 Deerwood Drive LLC. That it does meet site plan 19023F. With two waiver requests. First, 190279 EE stating which requires existing conditions onsite adjacent parcels is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the regulation. The second waiver request, NRO 19027900, which requires a traffic report is granted, will not be contrary spirit and ten of the regulations. Three, four and five as written. Six, prior to the issue of a building permit, all comments in an email from Joe Mandola Street, October 2nd, 2020 shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department. Seven through 12 as written. 13 would, a question, would this be prior to recording of the deed that contribution of $1,300 referencing November 2nd of the engineering 2020?
This won't be recorded, it's a site plan.
Okay.
Hudson, would you prefer prior to the chair signing the plan or prior to building permit?
Prior to building permit is fine and just a couple correct was probably. It was $1,200.
Okay, thank you.
Prior to Mandola's, Mr. Mandola's stipulation six, Mr. Mandola's, the date of his email was December 2nd of 20.
Okay. Okay, prior to the chair signing it, a contribution of $1,200 from the applicant referencing Mandola email and our letter, November 2nd, 2020.
One I think would be husband.
Oh, I thought it was Mandola.
Mandola's, Mandola's is in stipulation six.
Okay.
And that's the second of December. Does that make sense to you, Ed? You want to say it that way?
Yes.
And then?
For, was it an email or a letter?
Email for number six, stipulation six.
Yeah, would. Six would, the six was saying Mandola, it was husband?
No, six, six, six is, six is Mandola, that's correct. But that's 12, too. And under stipulation 13, that's husband and that's 11, too.
Okay, so I heard October 2nd for the, and that's the question I had before is on six was, is that October 2nd or?
December 2nd.
Thank you. So, so I'm going to amend number six to the date to December 2nd, 2020.
Correct.
And 13 was prior to the chair signing $1,200, according to husband on November 2nd, 2020. I hope I got it right.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, you got. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Weber to approve with 13 stipulations. First two waivers being read as, is granted, will not be contrary. The date of the email from Joe Mandola for stipulation number six being the second of December 2020 and stipulation 13 being prior to the chair signing the plan that the applicant. The $1,200 to the, it's the Amherst Street Corridor Fund, Johnson. As per the email from Wayne Husband dated 11 to 2020.
Yes.
Do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair?
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alderwoman Jan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks a lot.
All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Great. Okay, moving on with our agenda. New business site plan, this is case number three, Weston Associates, Inc. owner. This is an application and acceptance of a proposed one-year extension for previously approved site plan to NR 1103 to demolish existing structures and create two new retail plaza buildings. This property is located 546 Amherst Street. So before we get into it, do we have a motion as to whether this application is ready for jurisdiction? I have a motion by Mr. Barley to take jurisdiction, new business number three site plan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson? Mike Peterson?
You're on mute, wait.
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Jan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Then I will, go ahead, sorry. Motion passes. Okay, so do we have somebody from the applicant that wants to just present this extension?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, good evening. My name is Chris Rice. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Chris Rice with TF Marine here on behalf of the applicant and the owner. I could share my screen if, if it would help for one second just to refresh everybody for the plan. So this is the plan that was approved, I believe it was approved December 5th of last year. So our, our approval expires tomorrow. We are just requesting a one-year extension. We've addressed most of the conditions of approval. Basically, the biggest piece of it, we were approved last December and then obviously we went into winter conditions. The biggest approval item that we're still working through is just the offsite improvements because there's going to be a turn lane added here for the new signal that's at this new location here. So we had to do offsite survey and then we submitted plans. And honestly, with all the COVID stuff going on, everything was just delayed a little bit. Everything from trying to get police details for traffic control when we were doing survey to just general review times and such for plans. So we have submitted our, our initial set of plans. We received comments on the offsite plans and we've responded to those. We're kind of just working through some final details with city staff and all of the other conditions of approval relative to the site plan. I think we've addressed to the satisfaction of staff. We're just kind of awaiting final sign off on those as well. So we just respectfully request a one-year extension so that we can just finish everything up. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you, if any of the board members have any.
Okay, thanks. Anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Rice, thank you, thank you for your presentation. In addition to the widening, there, there was a proposed addition, basically signalizing the fourth leg of the intersection. I, I guess I was just trying to get a better understanding of how far the actual engineering had, had progressed and what type of feedback you had gotten back from, from engineering staff.
Sure, let me just share the screen again just to help explain it. So again, we've, we've done our, all the field survey, we've submitted a set of plans. This doesn't accurately depict, this was just a conceptual sketch at the time that we had done the presentation for this project. This turn lane has extended quite a ways. Everything has been designed, basically what we're dealing with right now is just the final location of this mast arm here. Because right now, a portion of the mast arm crosses over the right-of-way line. And there's no existing easement in this area, even though there's a lot of utilities in that area. So we're trying to see if we can obtain an easement. If not, the alternate location that we're potentially looking at is in the island here in Blackstone. But in discussions with city staff and city engineering, the preferable location is here. So we are trying to make that work. But we can't force a private entity to give an easement. So we are, we are seeing if we can get that accomplished. But if not, we have to look at an alternative location for the mast arm. So pretty much all the other engineering is, is taken care of and all the review comments are addressed, that's much the main item that we're dealing with at this moment.
Okay, thank you. If I may ask you just a quick follow-up, Mr. Chair? I, I, I guess, if there, I'm not trying to get too deep into the weeds here because I'm sure engineering staff has covered this. But, but, but typically, if you're going to think about putting in a foundation for a mast arm, you'd have to perhaps do a boring and I, and I guess if you don't own that land or if there's no, there's no public, you know, right of way or easement there. I guess I'm just trying to understand how you'd come up with that design. I, I did, kind of the reason I'm asking this is because I think when this plan was approved last December, a lot of the engineering details were basically left as a condition of approval. I don't think you had shown a conceptual plan for, for mast arm locations, for turn lanes, for loops, for, for some of the basic accoutrements of the signal equipment. And I guess a year later, I'm just trying to figure out where we are.
Yeah, so, well, like I mentioned, we, we started the field survey in the spring after the winter conditions pretty much ended. And that was right when COVID hit. And we did have some delays just trying to get police details because we did have to have traffic control out there in order to survey along Amherst Street and get the median islands and such. So we had started our design, I want to say, beginning of the summer. And we made our initial submittal to city staff, I want to say, in early June. And I believe we received our first review comments. You don't quote me, I can get you exact dates if you need. I'm just giving you rough timeframes. But I want to say we received review comments sometime in July. We responded to all those review comments in August and we're, we're just waiting to hear final feedback. So I guess clarification on the mast arm. We can shift the mast pole location itself into all of the right-of-way. But I think the more main concern from city engineering is being able to main, do maintenance if it ever needs work on it. So they wouldn't prefer it that close. In order to keep it all within the city right of way, it would, we could do that, but it would be a lot closer to the edge of pavement than I think people would like. So we are trying to get it in this location, which basically the property line goes through the middle of that little circle which represents the pole of the mast arm, the vertical piece. So it's, the mast arm itself, just a little piece of it is over the property line there. Again, we could shift it if we need to, to stay out of that. But I think that they're more concerned about maintenance. So I think there is a solution, it's just we're trying to, to get the optimal one if we can.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Mr. Hudson, you had your hand up there?
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to echo what Mr. Rice said that we've been working, we've been working with them. The plans that have been completed are, are, you know, extensive and complete. We've commented and they've, they've responded. So we're just working through those things and trying to find the best location for this mast arm. And we'll, we'll work with them to try to get an easement if we can to, to make it ideal. So I just wanted to echo those things. We, we have noted that this will need to go to the Board of Public Works. It's the streets in the moratorium because it was paved in the, in the last five years. So, you know, the offsite plan will go to the Board of Public Works for review also. So I just want to note those things.
Thank you. And just to follow up, just to follow up on that, we were initially scheduled to be on the Board of Public Works meeting. I think it's two weeks ago, but we did withdraw just be, just in case something changed with the mast arm. We didn't have to go back to them if something had changed relative to the offsite improvement. So we're just waiting until everything's finalized to, to go through that process.
Other questions of the applicant during the hearing from the board? None, I will go ahead and open, if there are any members of the public that was speaking opposition or concerned of the plan or question, go ahead and unmute. Say your name and address for the record. Not hearing any or seeing any. Just guess any further, I will give this opportunity for the board for anything else in the hearing? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the hearing, move to the meeting. So pretty straightforward, one-year extension, seems like a pretty reasonable request for the reasons indicated by the applicant. So anybody else have any comments or want to discuss anything? Okay, anybody want to make a motion? Chair, Mr. Barley?
I'll make a motion to approve new business number three site plan, which is a request for a one-year extension of the plan. And that'll be with the finding that the, the plan doesn't meet the requirements outlined in site plan in section 1, I guess, 146 deed. And that will be with one stipulation that the prior conditions of approval from the original planning approval will be incorporated into this, into this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. So we have that motion to approve with the stipulation as indicated by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Jan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, everyone, have a good night.
All right, thank you. Next up, I don't know, do we, do we have a tentative agenda in our packet? I don't know if I have one. Don't think I saw. Did we have one? All right, so nothing there. And then next up on the agenda, we have nomination committee for officers for 2021 calendar year. So normally what we do with that is one of the board members, often the secretary and or others, but it can be anybody who wants to do it. Just takes charge of communicating with the board to get any nominations for officers for next year.
Okay, I'd like to submit that I'd like to step down from being secretary.
Okay, that's all right.
I'd like somebody else to.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're essentially in a discussion at this point, so I think.
No, I just, I'm fine with. No, I just, I, I'm fine with putting out the stuff. I know what it is, but
Yeah, normally, Ed, you just send an email around to each, you know, to the board members and um just request any nominations and then I think it's our first meeting typically, we'll know that we bring out those nominations and then we vote.
Right, it would be at the January seventh meeting, which will be our next.
Miss. There for people.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yeah, I, I think I actually did that last year. I, I think I, I volunteered for that, so I, 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 I don't mind doing that again. I'm not trying to take it away from from Mr. Weber if he wishes to do it, but I, no, no, you can do it. You can do it. You did a great job.
Yeah, I agree.
I would just say, Bob, historically, I think the practice is that the nomination committee consists of that board member who's not present at the meeting.
Exactly.
But, you know, so we could make it, make it mag, but if you want to do it, that's fine, too.
Hope you're on mute.
Oh, sorry about that. I, I'm not trying to break protocol. I, I, I just, I, I, I know I did it last year, so if you wanted me to do it again, I, I'd be more than happy to do it. But again, I, 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 I trust board members with more experience to, to kind of sift through the, the, the rules for me. So I, I just thank you.
Happy to have you send the emails around, Bob. You can go ahead and do it. So um yeah, and then just uh, I think that usually we just indicate if anybody else, like Mr. Weber, uh, I'm, I'm fine with a nomination for next year. Mr. Barley, are you, are you keeping your name in or out?
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm fine with, with continuing to serve.
Okay. So and then obviously you can nominate anybody you want. That's on the board.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, just one, one question of clarity. Um, I, I'm, my, my recall from a year ago is poor. Um, I, I know at a minimum I had to ask uh the regular board members, which, which I, I believe is, is uh yourself, um, Mr. Barley, Mr. Weber, uh Maggie Harper, myself and, and Larry Hirsch. Uh, w- we, we, we did not have a city engineer last year, I believe at this time, and I believe Mr. Peterson is, is the mayor's rep and I, and I can't recall if he was included in that polling last year. Uh, and I, I don't, I can't remember. I don't have our bylaws in front of me, but I, I just couldn't remember if it was the, the regular um appointees or if we included some ex officio members.
Uh, I think, uh, go ahead, Mr. Hudson.
I'm happy to be excluded as I feel as a, you know, de facto member of the board. That's why, and I, and this is a good opportunity for me to bring it up, but uh, you know, you don't hear me make many motions and, and things like that. And I, I do that purposely uh because I kind of feel like I'm, I, you know, I'm, I'm here at the uh, due to my position, which is, you know, I'm happy to, happy to be here for that, but I, I in no way want to be involved in any of the politics or nominations or or even advocating necessarily for any of the uh, the, the cases.
Okay, great.
I, I think I voted last year for chair and vice chair, but if I don't vote this year, I'll be just fine with that. Whatever you decide is the mayor's representative's position.
Um, Matt, go ahead.
The bylaws do say it's the six regular members only.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Yeah, I think you, you, Mike and, and obviously the old woman and Alderman can so, and, and Dan and can certainly participate in the discussions. I think it's just the vote itself, you know, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for the clarification. I appreciate that.
Great, okay. So we'll watch, everybody watch for an email from Bob.
It'll, it'll probably come the afternoon of the meeting, but uh, no, I'll, I'll, I'll try, I'll try to do better. We'll, we'll, we'll get it out there to everybody, so.
Yeah, and uh we'll, we'll, we'll try not to put Ed as a secretary. It's no uh, no guarantees, Ed. All right. Uh, anything else? Any other discussion items?
No.
Mister or Matt?
Doug, just two quick comments. I just wanted to thank the board for your patience on the first item on the agenda this evening. Obviously, that's a bit of an odd uh application. And, and the reason I bring it up is obviously we're going to be proceeding with a land use code rewrite coming up in the next year. And I would just urge all of you to make a mental note, take a written note, whatever you, you you're comfortable with. Any sections that we run into that you feel uncomfortable with, you'd like to revisit as part of that code update, please let us know and we'll certainly bring it before the board for discussion. And obviously uh the board's participation in some of these developments in the downtown area may be one of those items that you'd like to have further discussion about. So I, I, I do want to thank you for your patience and your understanding, but please let us know if you have something like that, that you'd like to discuss.
Right.
The second item I just wanted to bring it up is obviously I did include in your packet these wonderful Imagine Nashua signs. I just wanted to quickly comment on those. Um, we are having a contest right now. It's really a kind of a public-facing outreach uh process that we're going through to get a sense of uh what people imagine Nashua like in the context of this master planning process that we're going through. Um, I, I certainly don't want to apply any pressure directly to the board members, but if you do have a chance and you certainly don't need to tag in the way that i- it's referenced on the, the instructions on social media, but if you have a chance to either visit a spot in Nashua or simply write a phrase down that makes you think of how you imagine Nashua in the future and, and take a picture with it or take a picture of it, please feel free to share it with me. We are going to compile all of those comments. Uh, it's not simply just a social media campaign. Uh, we'd like to get a sense of what your, your vision is for the community. And obviously you're all actively engaged in the process. This is really more of a public outreach effort. Uh, but please do take a chance if you feel comfortable and write a statement down or, or, you know, send us a picture or video, whatever you feel comfortable with. We'd love to get your feedback.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any, anybody else? Any other discussion items? Mr. Ballinger?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, 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 I just want to, uh, this is our last meeting of the year. I, I, I do want to extend uh some gratitude and thanks to uh planning staff, engineering staff. Um, it, it's been quite an unusual nine months. Um, and, and I, I, I think, I, I think there's really not been a beat that's been missed. Um, so I, I, I do appreciate that. Uh, and again, all, as always, for keeping us informed and um um, I'd like to see you all in person again uh at, at some point. Um, but, but uh a- again, given everything that's, that's gone on, I, I, I really uh, I, I do appreciate your, your, your professionalism. Uh, and, 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 you know, basically just trying to keep us informed and uh, you know, making sure, you know, we, we have what we need to, to, you know, continue this process. So thank you.
Yep, did it. Yeah. All right, anybody else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Weber, make a motion to adjourn.
All right, it's a motion by Mr. Weber to adjourn. Oh, we need to vote on that.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Jan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Uh, Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we are adjourned at eight thirty-eight.